Good evening, everyone. This is the Dearborn Board of Education meeting of June 12, 2017. We will start with a roll call. Call to order and roll call.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Hamud.
Here.
Trustee Mead.
Here.
Trustee Pelachkov here.
Trustee Thorpe.
Here.
President Lane.
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Amala Kadri, interim principal of Snow Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead the pledge of allegiance.
I would like to introduce the following Snow students to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Gonzalo Garza, Lorenzo Garza, and Dylan Davis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, gentlemen. We have a certificate for you. Who is Lorenzo? Lorenzo, thank you for being here tonight. Thanks very much. You did a great job. Gonzalo, thanks again for doing it. Thanks to your mom and dad. And you must be Dylan. Thank you, gentlemen. Great job. Okay.
Superintendent's update, agenda items.
So I do have several things to mention under agenda items. I first want to congratulate all of our retirees. We do this every month and as we get closer to the end of the school year, obviously the list goes up. So we have Karen Schultz with seventeen years and Rob Llewski, thirteen and three-quarters years. We have Majda Ayub with over nineteen years, Roger Bartles, over thirty-three years, Donna Cook, over fourteen years, Catherine Darby, eighteen years, Brenda Dennis, over fourteen years, Susan Domon, nineteen years, Michelle Zingle, over twenty years, Cordula Gobel, over twelve years, Gregory Guzzard, twenty-seven years, Cheryl Heytu, thirty-one years, Cheryl Jenkins, over twenty-four years, Jeanette Levangi, over twenty-one years, David O'Brien, over thirty years, Deborah Osborne, over twenty years, Elizabeth McGee, thirty years, Carol Mancini, eighteen years, Jacqueline Malany, thirty-one years, Mark Scott, over thirty-one years of service, Keith Schunkweiler, over forty-three years of service, and Sharon Stetz, over twenty-three years of service. So we thank the retirees, we congratulate them, and we appreciate their many, many years of service for Dearborn Schools. So if we can recognize them. So I have a couple other things on the agenda items. Later, there's going to be a discussion on the welcoming resolution. I know that trustee Hamud in the policy committee, and I know that there was a welcoming resolution at the college, so it was initiated through the policy committee and the full board will be a discussion. But I just wanted to read this, what I think is a very positive resolution that's come through the policy committee, and so I'm going to take the time right now to read that. Dearborn Public Schools, and again, this is draft, it'll be for discussion, and then the hope would be to get some sort of approval at the next meeting for a vote. Resolution of Dearborn Public Schools Board of Trustees, reaffirming Dearborn Public Schools' commitment to being a welcoming school district. Whereas Dearborn Public Schools is welcoming to everyone, including immigrants, refugees, internationals, and diverse individuals from all walks of life seeking education and employment opportunities. And whereas Dearborn Public Schools is an integral part of the diverse community it serves. And whereas Dearborn Public Schools deserves to reaffirm its longstanding commitment to being a welcoming school district. It is hereby resolved Dearborn Public Schools shall continue its commitment to welcome individuals from all walks of life. Our diverse employees, students, their families, and the community that we serve are who we are. Their diverse knowledge, skills, and backgrounds and experiences enlighten and strengthen our school community, contribute to its growth, and provide a foundation for tomorrow's leaders. We are committed to their success in providing an open door to their educational and professional goals. This longstanding commitment is woven throughout our mission, statement, values, policies, services, and daily practices. We reaffirm this commitment as follows. We will continue to provide equal opportunity access to our educational offerings, activities, and jobs. We will continue to use our best efforts to provide a safe environment free from intimidation and discrimination. We will continue to protect the civil rights of all students and employees by prohibiting and taking prompt and remedial action against all forms of discrimination, harassment, and violence. The school district shall continue to provide support services to victims of such prohibited conduct. We will continue to be an educational voice for acceptance, understanding, compassion, and inclusiveness for all. We will continue in accordance with the Family Educational Privacy Act, otherwise known as FERPA, to not disclose the private educational records of our students without the student's or guardian's consent or as required by law. We do not and will continue to refrain from inquiring about or documenting a student's or family member's immigration status and will not disclose such information without the student's guardian's consent or as otherwise required by law. We do not and will continue to refrain from tracking undocumented students or their family members. We will continue to follow the law, applicable inquiries from and visits by immigration officials to the school district property, and require search warrants and court orders as may be applicable to legally protected private areas, student and employee information and records. We will continue to provide support services for our immigrant and refugee students. The Dearborn Public Schools will continue to partner with community organizations and legal services engaged in protecting civil rights for all students. The school district shall embrace the principles of the First Amendment, free speech, academic freedom, and the free exchange of ideas, and recognize the free association rights of staff, students, and their respective organizations. The district does not and shall continue to refrain from engaging in profiling or discrimination. Thank you. So the other policy that we have coming, that's a resolution, but we have a policy that's coming in discussion, and this has to do with hiring and relatives, and it's just a way to be transparent about hiring practices, and so that's another item that's on for discussion, and I think it's a positive process that the board has asked through the policy committee to move on, and so I just wanted to mention that as well. It's a positive through trustee Hamud, all the committees, President Lane, I know you're on that committee as well, and I know all the boards, you know, the direction of the board. The other thing I want to mention, which is on later, and I mentioned this to keep it on the agenda, we do have the school capacity boundary line issue. We don't have a lot of new information other than there's studies coming, but I want to let you know it is on a discussion item. It's going to continue to stay on there. Again, there's been no decision. It's just a responsible thing in a school district with this many students to continue to look at our capacity issues at the high school. So there will be some discussion later about, you know, expansion potentially at Dearborn High, but I can tell you there won't be a lot of details because we're still in the studying. That part of the process that the board has authorized us to move forward on those studies. And so Mr. Imashur will be here later to talk about that. I feel I must also comment on the wonderful Memorial Day celebrations that occurred. I know we had lots of trustees there. We had a ceremony at every single high school. I think it was outstanding. I think the military veterans were very appreciative. So we now plan to continue with the rotation between Fortson, Dearborn High, and Etzel Ford. And then it was a privilege to also, you know, be part of the parade, which I thought was outstanding, and I know we had a lot of trustees present at all these events, and I think it's just great to recognize, and I know Memorial Day was a little while ago, but it was a great day to honor those that paid the ultimate sacrifice, and I was excited to be there with my children actually in the parade as well, and it was a great learning experience for them. Couple other things. That's all for agenda items.
Okay, non-agenda items. Proposed 2017-2018 Board of Education meetings, board report 16107.
So we do have a schedule that we'd like to get approved at the next board meeting on the 26th, and it's similar to what we've done every year, other than there was one switch. Normally, there's a board meeting on the second Monday of July, but instead, we've moved it to the fourth, and the reason being, we don't have a college meeting in July, and the other reason is because it helps the Human Resource Department with hiring staff. It gives more time. It also allows, as you're going to hear on the agenda today, for principal appointments and assistants. It's a better operational system to have that rather than having a meeting shortly after July. So that's one shift. And the only other thing I wanted to point out is that Monday, April 9th, is, we have an asterisk there that it could potentially move to the Tuesday, the 10th. And the reason is, is if we do have trustees that are interested in attending the National School Board Association Conference, it actually conflicts this year with that date, so we're trying to be proactive. So what we said is, we would decide by January if we needed to move that, again, assuming that there was interest in going to the conference and, you know, for 2018. So that was the only other switch. The other, we also have a renewal that'll occur next month for our MHSAA Athletic Membership with the state. We have to be involved in that, and that's an annual thing, and so that will go to the board on June 26th for a renewal. We have to take action on that formally. A couple other things, just getting back to you. Trustee Barry, last time, had asked about some inquiries on Open Meetings Act, so we just did have a closed session under the Open Meetings Act, attorney-client privilege with our attorney to discuss those issues. So we just, we were trying to be proactive in answering those questions, so I just wanted to mention that for people who were aware from the last meeting. And the second thing that I was asked, which I have sent this to the board, is information from Wayne County. If, for example, you're, we're under a tight timeframe, which is coming later for the appointment of a board member, it's a thirty-day by state law. So this follows state law, and the, basically, the, we got a copy of the Wayne County RISA bylaws, and I'll just mention, you know, they identify when a vacancy, and I'll just read exactly what they sent me in their bylaws. Preliminary steps such as the following may be taken. Identify timetable for accepting applications, conducting interviews where appropriate, and making selection. Publicize availability of position and process for application by means that may include Wayne RISA's own website, local newspaper, and the recommendation that the local school district publicize availability of the position through its own website and other means. Next would be interview and selection steps. The board will hold a special meeting to interview and select a new board member. Candidates will be interviewed in an open session, one at a time, in alphabetical order. Interviews may be expected to last approximately fifteen minutes with board members asking questions on a rotating basis. Each candidate will be provided about two minutes to speak to the close of his or her interview. Upon the close of all interviews, the board will take time for deliberation as needed and make its selection in an open session. In the event, there are five or more candidates, the board may narrow the number of candidates for second round of interviews before selecting the successful candidate. The successful candidate will usually be appointed at the close of the special meeting in which candidates are interviewed.
And can you repeat again to make it clear that this is Wayne County RISA's
Wayne County's.
Policy?
Correct.
If this election tonight were to not succeed, and we have
Correct.
That thirty-day deadline.
So this is not Dearborn Schools. This was just a request for information on what Wayne County, because by law, if we don't get somebody appointed within thirty days, then that would be the process that would be followed by the county to appoint a board member.
Thank you.
Recognition and acknowledgements.
That's all, correct?
Yes, yes.
I figured he looked like he was.
Normally, I have a lot to say, don't I? Mary's not, she's got the system, right?
I read his body language.
Good.
Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations. And I don't have the name of
We have two
The students here.
Students here tonight.
State their names.
Good evening. Hang on, and I'll introduce you. Commendations are going to be read by Dearborn High School students Maya Hamka and Maya Kadut. Unless they got your name on them, you're looking at each other.
No. Commendations to the Dearborn Public School seniors who awarded sixteen of the twenty scholarships presented by the Islamic Center of America at their annual scholarship presentation on May 7th. Congratulations to the awardees who each received $1,000 scholarship.
Commendations to the thirteen Dearborn Public Schools' transportation staff who on May 20th participated as judges and competitors in the annual Wayne County School Bus Rodeo held at Taylor Truman High School. The five judges from Dearborn were Tahira Diallo, Latonya Eason, Pat O'Reilly, Patricia Pro, and Dave Williams. Congratulations to the seven Dearborn drivers who competed and placed fourth as a team against thirteen agencies. The drivers were Florhadia Bledsoe, Tyron Davison, Sharif Nusseba, Tiffany Pankey, Angela Sains, Shanika Smith, and Tamika Young. Congratulations to Shanika Smith, who took the top individual honors by placing thirteenth out of sixty-two drivers.
Commendation to all the students who took part in this year's middle school track meet at the end of May. Congratulations to both the stout girls and the boys' track teams for taking home first-place honors in the district-wide competition. Special thanks to Shane Shaki and Fedwa Fawaz for their hard work organizing this year's middle school track meet. Great job by all the coaches, athletic directors, and volunteers for making this event a great success.
Commendations to all the fifth through eighth grade students who won prizes in the 2017 Dearborn Law Day essay contest conducted by the Nineteenth District Court and the Dearborn Rotary Club. The contest was held in conjunction with the fifty-ninth anniversary of Law Day, a national day set aside to celebrate the rule of law and provide an opportunity to recognize the important role of courts. The essay winners were: fifth grade, first place, Khul Abdullah from Salina Intermediate; second place, Laura Al Hajj from Hague Elementary; third place, Amani Sayed from Hague Elementary; and an honorable mention to Malik Tumi from Hague. In sixth grade, first place, Hadi Harb from Bryant Middle School. In seventh grade, first place, Connor De La Rosa from Divine Child; second place, Logan Bermudez from Divine Child; third place, Rahamad Dakhla from Bryant Middle School; and an honorable mention to Adam Said from Eunice Middle School. And finally, eighth grade, first place, Amal Said from Bryant Middle School; second place, Amir Said from Eunice Middle School; and third place, Rena Nassar from Salina Intermediate; and finally, an honorable mention to Myra Verk from Salina Elementary.
Commendations to four outstanding Dearborn teachers who were honored in May at the twentieth annual Alberto Muirhead Teacher of the Year Awards. The honorees who were selected from eighteen hundred nominations were nominated by the children they teach for making a positive difference in students' lives. Twenty-seventeen Teachers of the Year honorees are: Julie Spencer of Henry Ford Elementary, award recipient at the pre-K to secondary grade category; Nejwa Ali of Maples Elementary, who received recognition in the third to fifth grade level; Alham Barbat of Salina Intermediate School, awarded recipient at the middle school level; and Thomas Brown of Dearborn High, who received recognition at the high school level. Thank you to Dearborn High Area Chamber of Commerce for hosting the Teacher of the Year Awards, which are sponsored by La Fontaine Automotive.
Commendations to the Dearborn Public Schools' employees and community partners who, during the annual Green Tide Dinner fundraiser for the nonprofit Dearborn Public Schools Education Foundation, received awards for their dedication and service to our students and families. At the event, the Dearborn Public Schools presented Impact Awards to four district staff members who consistently demonstrate the district's core values of "go above and beyond" to make a positive difference in the lives of students, families, and colleagues. They were nominated by students, parents, or coworkers for their exemplary work and roles outside of classroom teaching. Commendations and thank you to the 2017 Impact Award recipients. Anna Dawson, secretary from Gear Park Elementary School; Mara Sedgman, language and literacy resource teacher at the Administrative Service Center; Marilyn Bossio, paraprofessional from the Michael Berry Career Center; and Alyssa Coleman, speech pathologist from Salina Intermediate. Congratulations and thank you to the three community partners who received awards for helping the nonprofit Dearborn Education Foundation fulfill its mission. Congratulations to valued community partner, Trinity Transportation President Jerry Shepherd, who received the foundation's victory award in recognition of the company's financial contributions and volunteer support over the years. Congratulations to Rod Alawan, publisher of the school newspaper, who received the foundation's prominence award for sharing stories about the wonderful programs and student achievements across the school district and the positive impact his work had on students, families, and Dearborn residents. Commendations to Dearborn Public Schools' communications specialist, Leslie Herrick, who received the Education Foundation's 2017 Volunteer Award. A longtime volunteer, Ms. Herrick previously served on the Education Foundation's Board of Directors and currently assists with publicity and special events.
Commendations to the following students who received scholarships at the Dearborn Education Foundation's Green Tide Dinner. Halet Al Hajj, Fortson High School, was awarded the Hamud Scholarship; Hani Al Hassan, Dearborn High School; Nada Jeradat, Fortson High School; and Sarah Holton, Etzel Ford High School, each received the Cipriano Scholarship. Laura Harp, Etzel Ford High School, was awarded the Darren Lee Family Scholarship; Zahra Shaafik Karasini, Fortson High School, received the Frakasa Scholarship; Selena Bazey, Dearborn High School; and Ali Faqif, Fortson High School, each received the Metzler Scholarship; Judy B. Dunne, Henry Ford Elementary School, received the Fakoi Scholarship, which is awarded to a fifth-grade student.
Fortson High School. Commendations to Matt Laura, Fortson's music educator, who was nominated as a national quarterfinalist for the Grammy Foundation Music Educator of the Year. A total of one hundred ninety-seven music teachers from across the U.S. are quarterfinalists for the Music Educator Award presented by the Recording Academy and the Grammy Museum. The Music Educator Award recognizes educators who have made a significant and lasting contribution to the field of music education and who demonstrate a commitment to the broader cause of maintaining music education in schools. The semifinalists will be announced in September.
Etzel Ford High School. Congratulations to Etzel Ford counselor and varsity basketball coach, Brahim Badun, for his induction into the Hype Athletics Hall of Fame. He was recognized for his forty years of athletic and coaching accomplishments, as well as his contributions to the community.
Dearborn High School. Commendations to the Dearborn High School Theater Program for their highly acclaimed stage production of the musical, West Side Story. Congratulations to the cast and crew of the production, as well as faculty members, Greg Viscomi, director, and Carmel Atkins, music director and DHS alumni, Jennifer McPherson, choreographer. Commendations to Dearborn High Thespians for earning eighteen medals and superior ratings in theatrical performance events at the annual State Thespian Festival held at Saginaw Valley State University. State medalists included seniors Maria Viscomi, Madeline Kaplan, Kyle Paldori, Sarah Randall, Trevor Barry, Kayla Katona, Adrian Skazalski, Jenna Kassem, and Emma Scott. In addition to being awarded two state medals, Emma Scott also earned one of the ten state thespian scholarships given out by the Michigan Educational Theater Association. The award-winning Dearborn High School theater students are under the direction of faculty member and theater program director, Greg Viscomi. Congratulations to Dearborn High School senior, Mohamed Al Hassan, who was one of the ten students who has been awarded guaranteed admission and paid undergraduate tuition at Wayne State University, and medical school tuition to Wayne State School of Medicine and Irvin D. Reed Honors College.
McCullough Eunice. Commendations to the staff and students at McCullough Eunice who pitched in to host an outstanding robotics event on May 13th. Hundreds of students and families from across the district attended to see the MCU team compete in this stellar event. Special recognition to Kadata Simmons, who led the school's efforts, and thank you to all who made the day unique and special for Dearborn students. Thank you.
Awesome job. That was a marathon.
Art show awards.
I'm Susan Briggs, the art resource teacher, and I am here on behalf of the art department. Retired art teacher Bob Curtis juried the annual Student Citywide Art Show this year. He selected twelve artworks to represent Dearborn Public Schools in the Highlights Exhibition. This show is in conjunction with Dearborn Artists Society. The art department normally brings the juror's choice artwork to this board meeting to show everyone, but the highlight show was scheduled earlier than usual, so the art's actually hanging in the Pajesci Gallery right now. It's inside of the Ford Community and Performing Arts Center. So the show will be up through June 28th, and I hope everyone can go see it. Through generous donations from Dearborn Community Arts Council, The Village Frame Shop, Blick Art Supply, and Dr. Maleko, all two-dimensional work was professionally framed, and students with three-dimensional work will receive a Blick Art Supply gift card, and every student will also receive a certificate. At this time, I'd like students, art teachers, parents to come up and please join me. Please hold your applause until the end. In kindergarten through second grade, Yasmin Altatta, a first grader from Salina Elementary, created a two-dimensional collage entitled Mondrian, and Mrs. Locke is the art teacher. Harwa Sala is a kindergartner from Miller Elementary, created a three-dimensional mixed-media piece entitled My Pink Snail, and Mrs. Saad is the art teacher. In special education category, Adam El Rumi, a second grader from Nowland Elementary, created a two-dimensional piece entitled Gummy Bear using paint and marker, and Mrs. Russell is the art teacher. Abdul Subhi, a fourth grader from Snow Elementary, created a two-dimensional piece entitled My Home using marker, crayon, and paint, and Miss Zekker is the art teacher. Third through fifth grade, Will Deng, a fifth grader from Duval Elementary, created a two-dimensional painting entitled Asian Scroll, and Mrs. Domon is the art teacher. Sixth through eighth grade, Teba Taleb, an eighth grader from Woodworth Middle School, created a colored pencil two-dimensional self-portrait. Mrs. Brown and Mr. Roberts are the art teachers. Ayah Bazey, Juliana Bazey, Suheila Mala, all seventh graders from STEM Middle School collaborated to create three dimensions of space out of cardboard and tempura, and Mr. Bazey is the art teacher. Ninth through tenth grade, Zara Shirazi, sorry, a tenth grader from Dearborn High School, created a two-dimensional mixed-media landscape. Mrs. Kabitsky is the art teacher. Molly Bondi, a tenth grader from Etzel Ford High School, created a three-dimensional ceramic vase, and Miss Daly is the art teacher. Eleventh through twelfth grade, Oriana Anderson, an eleventh grader from Michael Berry Career Center, created a two-dimensional digital piece entitled Cypher. Mr. Aquino and Mr. McMullin are the art teachers. Nadine Safi, an eleventh grader from Fortson High School, created a three-dimensional piece entitled Alfred out of cardboard and spray paint, and Miss Curtis is the art teacher. Superintendent Maleko has selected one work from the show to be framed and displayed in his office for the next year, and this year's superintendent's award goes to Arianna Kalinsky, a twelfth grader from Etzel Ford, who created a two-dimensional digital photograph entitled Etzel Ford Peacock. Miss Daly is the art teacher. So congratulations, and let's please give a round of applause to the students and the art teachers. I'm sorry I skipped one somehow. Miriam Boomrad from Howard Elementary School, Ms. Thomas is the art teacher.
Nice choice, Superintendent Maleko. We all like that. I can hear people going.
The Etzel Peacocks, they're famous.
Yeah, they're often on Rotunda Drive.
Well, I had some input, because what happened was I went there prior to the selection and took photos, and then I had some help from my children, too, with the selection as well, so, yeah.
They have good taste in art.
The next item, DFCU scholarship.
So we have Ms. Peggy Richard and Karen Saforino who are going to come up.
Hello, everyone. On behalf of DFCU Financial, I, Peggy Richard, and Karen Saforino, also members of the scholarship committee unanimously elected Dearborn High student and soon-to-be graduate on Friday, Leal Mustafa, to receive $2,000 in scholarship money. Leal answered the question, what would she, how has community service impacted her, and I'm going to read a little bit of it, and then you'll understand why she was the unanimous choice. My entire life, I've had an undeniable passion for helping others. Whether it be staying up late to tutor a friend, volunteering at a soup kitchen, or consoling someone, I came to find that I was most myself when helping others. With each project I took on, there was a new life lesson to be learned. My service shaped me into who I am today. Every new experience was an opportunity for me to learn about myself and the world. Had it not been for my service, I would never have discovered that I wanted to dedicate my life to helping others by becoming a lawyer and fighting for justice. That is the true power of service. You become addicted to making the world a better place. And on behalf of DFCU, again, who, the credit union credo is really helping others, we thought Leal was the perfect representative of that. Congratulations, Leal. Congratulations, Leal. She will be attending University of Michigan in the fall.
I'm sorry, we didn't, I don't think we caught that. She's attending Central?
University of Michigan.
Oh, University of Michigan. No, I don't.
Okay, we have Dr. Chokel coming up for the donation.
Good evening. A donation of $2,016.25 has been offered to Howe Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for special education center walkie-talkies. A donation of $650 has been offered to Stout Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for raising the bar project. A donation of $579.80 has been offered to Whitmore Bowls Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for drumming up the rhythm. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to McCullough Eunice School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for robotics, McEw Bot, 2017, 2018. A donation of $2,922 has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for 21st century music. A donation of $390 has been offered to Long Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Little Lending Library. A donation of $1,032 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Tiny Techies. A donation of Two Girls Puberty Student Kits has been offered to Fortson High School by Beverly Sturgill to be used to educate students. A donation of $500 has been offered to Stout Middle School by Grand Canyon Tours to be used for wheels assembly at Stout Middle School. A donation of a 5-foot rainstick instrument has been offered to Duval Elementary School by Mr. Ted Ben to be used by the students as part of the classroom instruments. Thank you.
Thank you to all the donors. Any other?
No other.
All right. We're into citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on agenda and non-agenda items for action, who are signed in by 7:10 p.m. by submitting a blue card to the secretary, may speak at this time. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The Board President reserves the right to limit times.
Before you go to the first speaker, I do want to mention to people, I'm sure, are all of the speakers on the same topic?
No. There is one speaker who is not on the same topic, but it's a non-agenda item.
A non-agenda item. So, most of the blue cards are here for the appointment of a new trustee, which we hope to do tonight. We hope to nominate and vote on a trustee. I hope we can get that done. That is our, it's our demographic, democratic responsibility, and we're going to try to do that. But I do want to mention to people that we are going to hold tightly to the three-minute time limit, because there are about 15 or 20 cards. So, we, we want to get into the process, and we want to get it done. So, I'd also, go ahead.
Well, can we go out of order? It's supposed to be agenda items first, but since there's only one person speaking on non-agenda, let him.
Yes, that's a good suggestion, yes. And then, and then I'll go back into the process. So, let's have the non-agenda item person first.
Okay. As we stated, we do not mention student names, and so, this person wishes to speak to the Board about their son. I don't know if this is a Mr. or Ms. Afif Wali of Dearborn.
Is Afif here? Afif Wali? Doesn't look like they're here. Okay, so, before we go into the next cards, I assume that those are all on the appointment of the new trustee, correct?
Yes, and we have a few that do not wish to speak.
Speak, okay, but it's on the topic.
But it is, let me make sure. Yeah, they're, they're both on that topic as well.
Okay, so, some people were not here on June 6th. I want to reiterate to you what Michigan state law is. This is a very unusual process for us. This is the, only the second time within the last 30 years or so that we've appointed. There were two prior appointments. Originally, we thought that the last appointment was 1986, when Jerry Stockwell was appointed, but actually, there was another appointment created by the death of a board member in 1993. So, this is something that's new to all of us, but state law does say that we will fill this by appointment. If there is a vacancy, and we must do it within 30 days, if we don't do it within 30 days, the intermediate school board for the school district will fill that, again, by appointment. And they're basically going to use exactly the same process. They can do whatever they want, but they will use some, a similar process as we have. None of the five members of the Wayne RISA School Board live in this, in, in Dearborn. They're in other cities, Ecorse, Romulus, Detroit. So, we, in, we have bylaws, which we will also follow. We read those last time. I won't read those right now. I do want to note to everyone that if we appoint someone tonight, that person will hold office until November 6, 2018, and the person who is elected on Election Day will then take office in January of 2019. So, it's an abbreviated term. Okay. So, there's been lots of suggestions about how we should do this, and the board members will explain why they, why they've chosen people, but where, that's coming a little bit later in the process. It will require that four of us all vote for one person. Obviously, we had six candidates, and they were very good candidates. I think almost all of them had higher education degrees. Lots of them had lots of experience with schools. They're all committed to schools. We have no doubt about that. The question is, who can we work with? Who do we think is the best person to fill the job? So, we have met with our council about the Open Meetings Act, how we should handle this, questions about procedure, and Doctor, we have Dr. Michael Wilmot, who will assist us from the Michigan Leadership Council, or the Michigan Leadership Institute, who will assist us with this, following your comments. So, we do want to keep comments as tight as possible, three minutes. I don't know that we will get a candidate on the first round. I know that other school boards who have done this have taken, just a couple of months ago, Ann Arbor took 10 rounds, and they could not reach a consensus. No one would move. The vote continued, continued, and continued, deadlocked, 3-2, for 10 rounds, and then they adjourned. So, if we cannot reach consensus tonight on, on an appointment, we will also adjourn. We'll go a number of rounds, and then we don't want to hold up the entire meeting. We have other business that we need to do, but we will adjourn, and we will come back on June 19th, assuming that we cannot get four members to vote the same way. If we can get four members to appoint someone, then that person will, will be appointed. I do want to thank every board member. This has been a long and difficult process. None of us were really happy to hear of Judge Bazey's departure, because she was a great board member, and we knew that we would now have to make a choice, a difficult choice, among a lot of good people. So, this is, has not been easy for us. We've read probably 15, 20 emails. We'll have another 15, 20 speakers tonight. We had five speakers at the last meeting. There's probably, if there's 100,000 people in Dearborn, there's probably 101,000 opinions, but we have, we thank you, everybody, for giving your opinion. We will struggle, and we'll each explain why we're doing this, but again, I think on behalf of the all, I think the entire Board would like to thank everyone who did apply for the position. You were under a lot of pressure in stating your case up here. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and we hope that everyone will be with us and as we struggle through this process. So...